...do in this, in this particular time of our meeting. Thank you. I'm going to ask Councilman Hall if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Wingfield?
No.
Thank you. Public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. That's a conditional use permit request by ETR Investments for a game room in the B3 General Business District at 77 Scattergood Drive Northwest, tax parcel number 496-20-4. Is there anyone here to address this? You'll give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Eddie Roberts, and I want to address this honorable council tonight and let you know what we are doing. We're wanting that conditional use permit because this is a 77 scattered good. It's going to be used for a childcare and EVPS. It's going to be a licensed after-school program for the Adventure Club, and it's open for Super Summer Camp at the end of this month. However, in September, it'll be extended for public usage on evenings and weekends, and that's for school-aged children to 12 years old. It's similar to a Chuck E. Cheese. It's called Galaxy Play. It's going to be very unique. It's a combination of a children's museum.
Can I get that name one more time, sir? Galaxy?
Galaxy Play. Yeah, it's, uh, it's going to be like a children's museum and a Chuck E. Cheese model. It does, we don't sell pizza and don't have food. People will bring their food, a little sack lunch, and, uh, but they'll get to enjoy the fun just like they would in Chuck E. Cheese's rolling up. But it, that's not going to happen until September, and then it'll be open for public service for what we call just-in-time care or flex care. For example, if it's, if it's in December and somebody wants to go shopping, they can bring their, their child by there, and we have in-house supervision and teachers there. So they'll, they'll be able to do drop-off care for like a couple of hours, and they will have supervision childcare. So, uh, you know, they can come, then they can come back and get their child. So it's going to be a real unique but an awesome thing for the community, I believe. So basically, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one question, sir?
Yes.
The, um, the CUP request, and what would be the occupancy that, what that place could hold?
One fifty.
One fifty?
One fifty.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good. Anyone else here to comment on this portion of the public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close this portion of the hearing. We go to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have several items: meeting minutes for April the 18th, 2017, and April 25th, 2017. We need to reschedule a public hearing, or schedule public hearings for June the 13th, 2017. An ordinance to vacate rights of way for portions of Pin Oak Drive and Twisted Oak Drive to convert to private drives contained in phases 11, 12, and 13, currently under construction of Oak Tree Townhomes subdivision, to convert to private drive for Roger and Barbara Woody. We would, on the 27th, an ordinance to amend Chapter 42 zoning of the town of Christiansburg Code in regards to permit clubs, lodges with a conditional use permit in the I-2 General Industrial District. June 27th, contingent on the above item, conditional use permit request by club or lodge, the app, it is a moose lodge, in the I-2 General Industrial Zoning District at 225 Industrial Drive. Also, on the 27th, an ordinance to amend Chapter 4 advertising and Chapter 42 zoning for purpose of regarding regulating the time, place, and manner on displaying signs in the town of Christiansburg. Uh, we are going to set a public hearing later.
Yes, we will.
On the rates and fees schedule. An annual request from Montgomery County Floyd Regional Library to waive loudspeaker permit fees for 2017, and proclamations for the month of May. Nurses Week, which is the 6th through the 12th, travel and tourism, the 7th through the 13th, Infrastructure Week, 15th through the 19th, Police Week, 15th through the 21st, EMS Week, May 21st through the 27th, Public Works Week, May 21 through 27, Water Safety Month, and Building Safety Month. And that's it?
Mr. Mayor, as a police council, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you, Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Spies?
Aye.
That would be six oh. Thank you very much. Next is our citizens' comment portion of, of our, of our meeting, and I'm sure that a lot of it is citizens' comments on the Starlight Drive-In situation. I want to make a couple of comments before we go into this. First and foremost, there has never been an implied, written, communicated any way, shape, or form threatened to shut the Starlight Drive-In down. That has never been a threat nor an intent from the town of Christiansburg. We simply want them to adhere to a noise ordinance that is in effect, that affects, that went into effect for them when they changed out the speaker system. Now, if you don't want to like to make public comment on anything at this point, I need your name, your address, and make your comments to the, to the chair, and you got a limit of three minutes. Mr. Durkman, I think you would ask to be first?
Yeah, yeah, this is my son. Uh, my name's Dennis Kiernan. Um, I live at 1380 Starlight Court. That's like the back row of the Starlight Drive-In.
It's the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
That's right.
And there was never any complaints until 2016, last year, when the loudspeakers got replaced, uh, or replaced the, the car, in-car speakers. Uh, they still have the radio, but the claims that you see on Facebook and whatnot say that car radios are wearing out in, in listening to a two-hour movie on the radio. Uh, I don't know. We used to have heaters and in, in-car speakers, and you turn on your car every, you know, in an hour for five minutes, and then to charge it up. Uh, it's being, it was being played at, at extreme levels up to 100 decibels, which is according to printouts of what 100 decibels sounds, that's the same as being on a, riding motorcycle. Uh, uh, movies like Scarface on a Thursday night, that was being bombarded through the neighborhood. Uh, I looked up stuff on, on that movie, and that's near kids in the trailer park and kids in the upper neighborhood, and my kid, and there were 226 uses of the F-word, 24 with et cetera words, you know. I won't get into all of them, but, but there's a whole list, and I'll leave it with you if you want. It, it was on IMDb, Scarface. Uh, and that was on a school night. Uh, parents in the, you know, that's an R-rated movie that, you know, parents are supposed to accompany their kid if they're allowing them to watch that kind of thing. When it's being blasted out over the, over the airwaves, those kids are, those parents aren't given implied permission that it's fine for their four, five-year-old to listen to that. So I, I don't know. That, I think is very low-class. Uh...
You got about a minute?
People, people living in the area, we, we can't even sit outside and talk with friends and family anymore. It's just gotten to be nothing but a racket, and we're expect, being expected to sit in our houses, run the air conditioners or any other appliances in order to drown out, uh, sounds that we, you know, from, from the movie. Uh, we, nobody is trying to close them down. It used to be a fine place. The most you'd hear is laughter, and that was heaven, and you could sit outside. Uh, this is just insane.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to address this subject? Yes, sir.
Ronald Harris. I live at 1360 Starlight Court, I'm in the cul-de-sac. I've lived a little bit a hundred foot of the Starlight for 53 years, and up until last year, we had no problem. The noise level is just hard to beat. Just had no problem whatsoever, but when you get in the house, got your TV turned on, the doors shut, and you can still hear it coming over the loudspeakers. It's just, we're not asking to close the place down. We just wanted to be respectful enough to get the noise down before it's fair enough.
Sir, can I get your name once more, please?
Mrs. Harris.
Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else to address this issue? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Marissa Sacks. I'm at 65 Mulberry Drive in Christiansburg, and I'm actually here on behalf of another gentleman, William Craft, who drafted a letter that asked that I speak to the council. So I'd like to read that. Um, "Dear Christiansburg Town Council, I understand that tonight there will be a discussion regarding excessive noise from the Starlight Drive-In located on Starlight Drive in Christiansburg. I own Sue's Mobile Home Trailer Park consisting of 21 homes. This park directly borders the Starlight Drive-In. Since I assumed the ownership of this mobile home park in 2005, I've never had the first complaint of noise from the Starlight Drive-In, none. The Starlight Drive-In has been a fixture of the Christiansburg community for decades. I believe that Starlight Drive-In is a special historical type of business, and Christiansburg should be thankful that this business has not closed, as many of this type of businesses have. The owner has upgraded the facility and offers a family entertainment venue that is unique and affordable. Family entertainment that is unique and affordable. Starlight Drive-In is an asset to this town and the community. I fully support Starlight Drive-In and would strongly oppose any actions that would diminish their operations on the ambiance this business offers to the generations of moviegoers who still enjoy what the Starlight Drive-In offers. Respectfully, William Craft." Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the issue? Yes, ma'am?
If y'all don't mind if I come up here, my voice is not what it used to be.
I'm not sure the microphone's on, but that's all. Go ahead.
Okay. I got involved in listening to some of this that was going on earlier today when I had started hearing rumors.
And again, your name. Did we get that?
I'm sorry. Carol Lindstrom, 630 Depot Street, northeast.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do I need to bring a stamp?
Just need, just need to stay consistent.
I can understand both sides of this argument quite well, and I think what we're looking at here is a wonderful opportunity for the town to be involved in looking at what citizens can do to help their local businesses, and what local businesses can do to be good neighbors to the citizens. We've got to find a balance here. This can't be an all-one-or-the-other. The tools to measure sound, I'm sure we have that equipment now if we have, if we have noise ordinance, right, or we have access to it. It's a simple matter of, is it meeting the criteria of the noise ordinance? Somebody pointed out earlier about going back to the old wind amounts. You can find those on eBay. They run anywhere from, the ones I looked at today, $85 to $250, they're collector's items. Um, it's a miracle that they didn't all get stolen out of there years ago with some on eBay. It's not something that works anymore. It's not a technology that works anymore. But for any given piece of technology, there's a fine tuning that can be done, and there's opportunities where we can work together. Maybe citizens need to come together to help come up with some funding to help create some screens along the back to help buffer some of the sound. But let's find out what some of the opportunities are, and then let's find out what we citizens are willing to do and what we need the town to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindstrom. Anyone else to address this issue? Yes, sir. Mr. Day?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Jiffy Day. I'm a sole proprietor, small business owner. I'm a playwright self-published author, and I write about landmarks in small towns, and certainly the Starlight Drive-In is a landmark in Christiansburg. From what I'm observing and talk to some of the complaints, we need a mediator before too much hostility and the rumors that you spoke about has gone rapid, because I was under the impression that the town was going to deny license for that business to continue. So I'm glad I talked to some of the people here. But as of my opinion, being involved in negotiations where I used to work, we need a mediator between these two groups and the owner of the business before it gets so hostile that nobody is talking to each other. And perhaps we were talking about decimal sounds. Uh, it would be nice, I know it might be expensive, if we get somebody like Tech to come in and run tests, and let's see the facts of the noise level. Now, I know that might be impossible, but I support Starlight Drive-In, and I also support the people who are having a problem with the noise. So it is my opinion, Mayor, that perhaps we need a mediator to go between these two groups, if somebody goes to come to some compromises to satisfy all parties. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Day, anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm James Scrub. I live 1290 Flint Drive. There again, I've lived in Christiansburg all my life and really liked where I live. But I, uh, the noise, I say noise, the movies. Like I say, I live right behind, and I can expect, you know, if I'm watching my TV, my windows, everything's up, and I hear the thing, then I'd expect to hear that. Can't complain. If my windows are shut, I normally have my TV probably up louder than most people. My ears are way a little bit. But when, you know, my windows are shut, your TV's up, and I have to turn the TV up even more to not hear the theater, then I, you know, I think that's a little loud. They can't tell, or I cannot believe that the people that are watching the movie have to have it that loud to be able to hear it. Uh, so, and like he said, yes, as citizens, we don't want, we just want to be able to work with Starlight and stuff and come to an agreement. Because, you know, it's, being here and it is part of Christiansburg, and we don't want it to close, but we also, you know, like I said, we hurt people on things, or they just, you see on Facebook. Pick, move. You don't like it, move. You know, that's not the way to be, and that's people that really, I think, or, you know, my opinion, they don't really know what's going on. So as he stated, yeah, mediator, somebody needs to be able to come together and us have a professional discussion and come up with something. But, you know, that's just, you know, you can't hear it. Never heard it before, you know, when they had it, and I understand, yes, it is, I'm sure they can't get the window theater, wind the speakers anymore. I'm positive, you know, sure of that. But also believe, you know, she worked with the people around her neighbors to where we can come up with something, to where she can, they can have their, you know, it's like one neighbor says, you know, uh...
Thank you.
If she wants to have an outside, an indoor theater outside, then she needs to put walls, some kind of thing, all the way around the theater to knock the sound out. Yeah, that's too expensive. I know she's not going to be able to do that neither, but, you know, that's what one of the neighbors is not here, you know, stating to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Jonathan Taylor. I live at 685 School Lane here in Christiansburg, and I work on Ms. Beasley. I'd like to clear the air on a few things. Ms. Beasley has spent a high number of attempts, times, and doctors to put a new sound system, move the sound system, and now at this point, pay the sound technician to remove the low frequencies and the bass from our system altogether. Now, as an example for our zoning map right behind y'all, Starlight is zoned in B3 for general business, and the noise ordinance, exemption number one, sounds generated in business, industrial, and mixed-use zoning districts that are necessary in incidental to use permitted at hand, is the exemption that we believe we fall under that's not being honored. Now, Ms. Beasley has, on many occasions, tried to talk to the town manager, the mayor, and get town council out to our location and to our surrounding neighbors with no delay. She has tried multiple times to reason and find a solution. My personal opinion is I believe that Ms. Beasley and Starlight Drive-In does fall under this exemption, and if I need to reiterate, at the time Starlight was built in 1952 and opened in 53, that it was in Montgomery County, and there was no ordinance pertaining to noise at that time that Christiansburg adopted.
Mr. Taylor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
What is the wattage output of the unit that was installed there at Starlight?
The wattage output is 4,000 watts.
4,000 watts?
But it does not.
You answered my question. The, the second question I have is, 4,000-watt speaker, how long, or can you give me approximate date when that was installed?
Approximate date? I would say January or February 2016.
Okay, so it would, it would fall in line with the complaints as far as there was no discernible noise experienced by adjacent property owners up until approximately January, February of 2016? I'm looking at you all. I take it that's true?
Yeah, spring of 2016.
Okay.
Now, 4,000-watt amp, that does sound like a very large number, but we have six 1,000-watt speakers, so they're technically under power.
Well, they're not pushed up. I don't know what they can take. That's an RMS level, but what can be, I understand what you're talking about.
And they, they have actually not been turned up above 20% of the total output.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I have a question, too. Uh, one of the speakers said that why, they couldn't figure out why you could not turn it down a little bit, that people in their cars could still hear. Have you tried different levels?
We have. Uh, we started in the beginning of 2016 at a level of seven. Now, there is an equalizer that we go with a digital screen. We've started at seven, 6.5, six, 5.5, five, all the way down to three. Once you get down five or 12...
You're at, you're at seven right now?
No, no, we're at 4.5 right now.
You're at 4.5, okay. I'm sorry.
Now, the other thing that you may be questioning about is the radio. A lot of our customers have had to use their radio a lot louder in the last few rows. We believe that's part of the complaints that the neighbors are hearing, or they're caught with.
Now, you've tried it to go even lower than 4.5?
Once you go to 4.5, we cannot even actually hear it at the concession.
And you said they, you, I guess by virtue of the equalizer, they have, I guess, you know, I'm looking at hertz levels, so there's particular, a level of certain hertz that they're not, they're no longer reproducing with that particular speaker?
That's correct.
Do you know what hertz level that is? I'm just wondering.
If I remember correctly, or a sound guy said anything, I can't put me on, but I would, I think that he said anything below 100 hertz is completely done.
Okay, so anything that basically failed more than hurt, yes, y'all.
This past weekend, you operated without the speaker system. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you have complaints from your customers? Did most of them listen to the radio?
We had complaints from our customers numerous times that they could not sit outside and enjoy the movie as they were used to. They could not hear the movie, and if I remember correctly, we had to jump-start 35 cars from the Adventure Club.
So we had no complaints from the neighbors this past weekend?
Not the neighbors.
Because the sound system wasn't on?
Not the neighbors, but over to their paying customers.
That's interesting. Very good. Uh, anyone else? Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sir, I won't say so. I'm still a Quinbrow. I'm Dennis's friend and have been for a long time, and I've been over there one of the night. The sound is up so high, vibrates the windows in his house, and he has this, the old man right here, he has enough problems out of him getting in bed with that noise, and he likes to mimic everything that he hears. And, uh, he's having a problem keeping bad words away. Uh, I would invite any of you to go and spend the night in Dennis's home and listen to the noise, and explain to him then how you would go to sleep as loud as it is. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Ronnie Sommer, Pembroke, Virginia. Me and my wife, we go there every, every week. We like sitting, sitting very back, and we, we use our radio, and we're, so we really can't hear it from the speaker. If I emphasize with a, with a redneck nearby, but, you know, I, I think it's a good, good cheap date night wing of the wine.
Thank you. Megan, did I see your hand up?
Yeah.
Name, address, you know how it works.
Do you need the street address?
No, I got you covered. I know where you are.
I figure I have a recognizable address. Um, I just wanted to say something in terms of the importance of the Starlight, um, and tourism. On average, during summer, we get people who come by the station and are looking for things to do, and they usually just stay over in Christiansburg and, and, um, spend money in local hotels and spend money in restaurants, and our chief way of arguing that people should stay here overnight rather than going to Roanoke is that here they can go to a drive-in movie and take their kids to, and go to do his drive-in and step back 15 years. And it's, I've been stopped telling a number of people who've stayed over because of that reason. So it is an economic driver locally. So my question is, are there, are there programs that perhaps the owners and, and neighbors and the town can, can look into that might help them put up at least somewhat of a sound barrier, or to do the plantings that we did with the sound wave and all those? Just a question.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I hope this is the place for a general comment. Is it, Mr. Mayor?
No, ma'am. At this point, we're still on the Starlight.
Okay.
And at some point, we'll get in, we'll, we'll change the subject. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I've got somebody behind you.
Hi, my name is Peggy Beasley. 365 Starlight Drive. They're in the middle of it all. I'm just trying to make a living. I've done everything that you all have suggested, and I've already spent way too much money on this issue, because I had to, I put the original set in, and then I had to rearrange it because of town issues. So, you know, people are not going to pay to see a movie if they can't hear it. So then, yeah, you're closing it down.
That's certainly your option, Ms. Beasley. We, we, I, no, no, I don't think anybody sitting at this table wants to see the Starlight Drive-In shut down.
I mean, the drive-in has never gotten any respect from the town. I mean, and it's one of the oldest things in here. There's no more drive-ins around. That's okay. I just wanted to come here and idea.
Yes, thank you.
My name's Eddie Roberts. I live in 26 Patriot Way. I heard a gentleman make a comment this evening already that we need a mediator. Sounds like there needs to be some conflict resolution and maybe even some parabolic testing. But I would offer my service to help the council and the town of Christiansburg to help you resolve this issue.
I make a motion on that. I think it'd be great. Anyone else? Yes, sir, one more time.
Yeah, Dennis Kiernan. Uh, that place existed for 50-some years with the old sound system, car radios, whatever. They could have upgraded the car radios. It didn't have to, it's not part of doing business. It's not the only thing that's keeping that place alive, is by putting in 4,000 or whatever it was, 40,000, uh, something speakers, watt speakers. That didn't, that wasn't the crucial point. It wasn't like people stopped going because they couldn't hear the theater. They went there always, and they still would, whether or not those speakers existed or, or, or not. I, I don't understand that part of the argument.
Thank you.
And, and as, oh... And, and as, oh, I'm, I'm very sorry. And as far as the settings, when you talk about a setting of seven or 4.5, what does that mean? You know, what's it, what's it doing? I could listen to one channel at, at, you know, with three bars on, on my TV, some I might have to put it on four. I don't know what it means, three bars, four bars, it doesn't tell me anything.
One quick thing to say. I can say that Peggy has no, and down in her mind, that she does not want to be, and I don't really think, if the town would come to Starlight Drive-In with maybe your sound technician, or a third-party one with a decibel meter. I know myself, I took decibel readings last year, and they were dismissed in last year's town council meeting, but we never exceeded 60 decibels at the end of the order, and that was the loudest that we had ever played it during our testing. Now, we know explosions in movies can resonate a little bit farther, but the speakers are pointed at the hill, there's a lot of foliage and trees that are thick to help reduce that. If I can't say it enough, Ms. Beasley has done everything in her power on this issue to try to resolve it. If I can help of any way or answer more questions, I'll be here as long as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Perhaps this young man should go in this gentleman's house and hear for himself what he's complaining about. It might give a different perspective from Peggy's point of view about the real noise.
That's certainly something we can't order.
Oh, I know. I'm just, he was suggesting he would do anything to solve the problem. He just made that statement. If that be the case, perhaps he should go and sit in this gentleman's house and see what the complaint is, to hear for himself. Perhaps he could just, on his end, a little bit differently, that might make a difference.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay. We will close that portion of citizens' comments unless, Mr. Hill, do you have?
No, I said we have.
We have some other.
Right, right.
We have some others. Anyone else here to address council on any other matter? We have had the public hearing already on the villas at Pepper's Ferry, so there's, we will vote on that tonight. There is no additional comment to that, because we've already had the public hearing.
Are you asking for public comments? Excuse me, is that what you're asking for, is our comments from the...
Comment anything.
You can talk about anything, but I'm telling you, we have already had the public hearing on the villas. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I guess if you can hear me from here.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Karen Irish, and I live at 90 Revolution Circle. And I have two comments. My first one is, I just want you to take note that the gentleman that was here at this hearing and at both of the zoning ones, named Neil Reed Nicholson, he happens to work for States and Homes. He happens to be their chief financial officer. He is also the gentleman who signed the paper that wanted to change the zoning. He's shaking his head as if he knows that. He wanted to change, he signed the paper to save the zoning from R1 to R3. And he has the right, as a citizen of this place, to say these things, but I think it would have been very ethical to mention that you work for States and Homes. The other piece of information I have is, a neighbor asked me, Marty Sacks from 310 Revolution Circle, asked me just to mention to the council that at this time, there seems to be no comprehensive plan to help the elderly and disabled. In our neighborhood, in the villas, we have several people that are in wheelchairs or scooters, and the advantage of our neighborhood has been that the housing is on one floor, and it's easy for them to move around. And States and Homes wants to put in villas, which will have a bedroom on the first floor, but it also has bedrooms upstairs, and also a loft. So it makes it kind of like buying that house if you're elderly and you have disabilities, you really can't use half your house. And we would like them to have had considered, or have the town consider, is what she would like, something for helping this group of people that are elderly and have these problems, where they can actually move around in their home. We're very lucky, the house style that we have is all on one floor. We have a lovely home with two bedrooms, we have a den, or a study, and we also have a sunroom. And it's a lovely house to move around in, but I don't have to walk upstairs. I have problems walking. And I think that's something the town, if we're not going to do it here, then we should do it somewhere else in the town, is what she's trying to say.
Thank you.
I thank you very much.
Sacks, you had, you had, you had your hands up two or three times, is that right?
It's just a, a general comment.
May I get your name one more time, ma'am?
Oh, Marissa Sacks.
Thank you, ma'am.
65 Mulberry. Totally a personal comment, but all evening, Mr. Gwen, I've seen you on your phone, and it's very bothersome to me, because I feel like we deserve your full attention. May I ask, what is more important than this meeting?
I agree.
I'm sorry, I just, I take that as a personal offense. I think it's very rude to be on your phone during a meeting, and that's all I wanted to comment about.
Thank you. Mr. Dorsett?
Megan Dorsett, the depot. I just actually wanted to say thank you to the council and to the town for supporting closing the crossing over Memorial Day weekend to improve safety, since my nervous system can't take dealing with three-year-olds watching a train and open the street at the same time. So I wanted to say thank you for getting this out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Shirley Akers, I live on Depot Street in Christiansburg. First off, I do want to thank town council for the other week when you heard my request concerning the possibilities of the Campbelltown property. I want to thank you all for that, because the next morning I did receive a phone call, so I am being kept in mind along with my church. But the other thing that I'm here to ask about is, I'm a board member for the Christiansburg Community Center, and a part of the coalition that involves CI and CI alumni being. And what my question is, Shaker Memorial Baptist Church is a historical building in the town of Christiansburg, along with the Christiansburg Community Center, which has been renamed from the Old Hill School. And what I've been tasked to do is ask about trying to get that included into the historical section for the town of Christiansburg, because it is not included. So that is why I'm here tonight. So if you all could do some investigation and see what it is that we need to do or work with you all to get that included in the historical section, it'd be awesome.
I sent you some information on that the other day. Did you get that?
No.
Had the link and all of the things about that. Megan, I'm sure you can tell us all about it.
Originally, Christiansburg, when the proposal was put in, to put in the Cambria Historic District, the proposal actually included it all the way to the top on Hill Street, or on High Street, included both Schaefer and Hill School, and also a house up there that had been used for a hospital or something at some point. The problem was, the National Register at the time required that all properties be contiguous and not be, could not bring in sections that were separated by other empty lots or by newer construction. And so the Cambria Historic District stopped just short of the top of High Street. They have since changed the rules. So actually, which would be probably a good idea to do, since Schaefer was essentially part of Cambria, it was in the, in the town of Cambria, is to essentially ask for amendment to the Cambria Historic District and bring in those street properties along, because there were four other houses up there that had fallen apart. And the amendment's a much easier process than the original, and it was, I mean, both the church and the school were surveyed when we did the initial, the initial work in 1990.
Mr. Dorsett, may I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
If you're included within the historical district, there's certain, I don't, there's certain requirements, and then there's certain parameters you have to follow within as well, correct? As far as if you're remodeling, or if you're modifying, or...
Not really.
Okay, that's a good way to put it.
It is what it is, and I mean, it's, it's, they don't want you to change the outward ...
Right, the facade and all.
But the inside, you can pretty much change however you need to. It's one of those of a work in the honor of all things, but it does come with some very nice tax credits.
That's right.
And for nonprofits, it's, and for nonprofits, for commercial properties, it's a 25, a 25% tax credit, which means those can be sold off, and somebody can buy those, and it helps organizations essentially get additional funds for restoration work.
So we just need to do this with y'all, kind of.
Even if they're not in the historic district, because they're in the National Register already.
Yes.
They're already qualified to do so.
Right.
But it probably should be, we should extend Cambria, the Cambria Historic District should have been where we originally proposed it, which was a high-street point, rather than further down the hill.
Very good.
So we can do that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's fairly simple.
That is quite a...
Okay, very good.
I'm like I'm back at school, I'm taking all the...
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Andrew, you got this?
Miss Akers, you said you did get a call back from the town?
Yes. The other thing, the next morning, the gentleman that he told me would call.
Mr. Henlon.
Mr. Henlon?
Yes.
Very good, thank you so much.
But he did, and like I said, I really appreciate that, because that was just like boom, 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 you know, but what that means, means a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Akers.
Anyone else? For the public, the citizens' comments? Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Thomas Irish. I live at 90 Revolution Circle. Don't want to take too much time, I just want to remind the mayor and the council that I sent each of you an email on Friday, pointing out that States and Homes, back in July 22, 2014, signed a statement saying that the property in question would be used only for a single family detached homes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Spence Taylor, also from the villas. Over the weekend, I noticed that the two applications related to the town houses listed three separate owners for the same piece of property, and it got my attention. I looked in the Montgomery County records, and only one of those was listed as the owner. So I raised a series of questions that I sent to each of you. I wanted to say today, Andrew gave me a call and talked me through that in some detail, and he shared some critical documents with me, and most of my questions, I think, have been satisfied. The only thing remaining, I had a question for Todd, from States and Homes. Todd, is your contract on that land a purchase contract?
I'm sorry, that becomes a public con, a public comment on a session that's already been closed, as far as the question and answers go.
Perhaps you can tell me after the meeting, Todd, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Introductions and presentations, do we have? Mr. Powell, do we have anything tonight? We're good. Okay, thank you very much. Old Business, Council Action on a zoning request by Snyder Company LLP for a 7.93-acre portion of a tax map number 435A40, located on north of Quinn W Stewart Boulevard Northwest, from R1 single-family residential to R3 multifamily residential. Public hearing was held on April the 25th, 2017.
I'll go ahead and open up some discussion on this. I'd first like to apologize to any of the homeowners or speakers at the last meeting who may have presented on this. I had a, received a call on my way to the council meeting that my younger son was going to emergency room, and so I spent the evening with him over in Blacksburg. So I do apologize for missing that, and it did cause me to do some extra work in preparing for this evening, but I'll go ahead and state my thoughts very simply and, and shut up. Went, going back, looking back over the history on this property, Mr. Irish noted what I was going to bring up, two, or three years ago, 33 months ago, this council considered favorably a rezoning application on this area to go to R1. And that, that property rezoning included a statement by the applicant, which happens to be Mr. Robertson, the same applicant, promising, or proffering, that the R1 zoning shall be utilized for single-family detached residential use, which is fine and proffering, and was acted on favorably by this council. Going back 21 months ago, there was a application to rezone property far more intensely than the present application, and this was for R3 zoning, where the apartment complex, where the same, the same developer, who's a very good developer, I should have started by saying that, he was a great developer, and a great product, and a great partner. But the application was for R3 zoning for the apartment complex that's going in, that's upscale. And going back to those minutes two years ago, was very impressive to read the involvement that Mr. Simonus had and the applicant to successfully navigate and achieve their goals with the support of the community. In fact, going through that, they had a meeting with the residents at the villas, with over 45 people in attendance, and there was only one dissenting in the public comments to this council, and it was by a gentleman by the name of Jamie King, and he didn't even live in the villas of Pepper's Ferry. He was off of Alexander Court in Stafford Farms. Sort of interesting, and a testament to the involvement that this developer's had with the community. So, that being said, and coming to the present, I understand it's a very good case to be made for the zoning application. However, based on the nature and the volume of the comments that we've received by the adjacent community, as well as the commitments by the same developer for the same piece of property 33 months ago, I will be voting to maintain the R1 zoning on this project, on this application. And that's, thank you for that form of motion, Mr. Stott. Well, if, if, there would be some more discussion, but I'll go ahead and, and make a motion that we deny the request based on the proceeding.
I would second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I guess I have a few words here. Every, every meeting that we have, we, Michelle calls out the goal, and most of the things that we vote on are somewhat meaningless, but this one is very important, I think. It's really important for everybody. And, you know, I, what Brad just brought up, I thought was a very good point from the, we bought out in 2014, and according to the builders and what I've heard, that they've had to change this because of conditions and requirements that have been put in. I did tour the entire area last, last week, and saw, saw the acreage. Some of the things that come to my mind, again, like he said, I think this is an outstanding builder. We have dealt with these people before, and they have done a good job, and they're respectful people. And I told them last week when I took my tour, I said, you know, this boat right here, I don't want to be 10 years down the road, somebody come up to me and say, well, who voted to approve this? You know, this is, this is terrible. And then I have to say to myself, well, hey, I was the guy on the part of it that voted that way. I also feel that too, that this community is growing, and they expect this is going to, the community's going to be up to 28,000, you know, by, in the next 10 years. I also realize, though, there is a density prob, problem here that this will include. It's going to be possible more traffic. But I'm thinking that this will be, this, this community will be good for us in the future. So I, I think I'm going to, to support it. And I understand both sides of the coin on this case. Thank you.
I can only speak for myself. We've already heard us, the builder's top-notch. It's fantastic, and frankly, one of the best our community is involved with, and very blessed to have him as a part of the community and a builder here. But the reality is, I believe, if I recall, a number of years ago, Mr. Simonus held those meetings. I can't remember how many residents of the villas I talked to at that time. And frankly, the purpose of that was, I think we may have even hinted a little bit, but certainly Mr. Simonus took the initiative as well, and that was to build that, a common thread, if you will, between the villas and the surrounding property. And it was to bring everybody together. I think it's been mentioned very well by Brad, there was but one dissenter who was frankly not someone who would be either adversely affected or positively affected. They weren't in that particular area, they spoke of it. But I was amazed at that time that we had an adjacent builder, if you will, to the villas, and yet there was entirely a sense of coming together, a unity, and an expectation. And I don't, the expectation is what's important for me. There was an expectation at that time as to what they were agreeing upon... for me. There was an expectation at that time as to what they were agreeing upon. And, and so when you're dealing with, again, residential, again, I think that's sacred. It is sacred. And at that point in time, we had an understanding. I think a lot of the Villas was looking forward to the part, that the, the stoplight was an issue. It's always been an issue. We still need it. Need it now. But that was certainly one of the driving forces behind it, and this builder was going to certainly help out and, and, and in that, in that thread as well, and help that be a reality much quicker. But again, I go back to this expectation. What was the agreement upon? What was the understanding of the people at Villas when they came here to support? And, and that's where I'm at. And that, and that is the reason why, I think Brad said it very well frankly, but I'm still where I was a number of years ago. I want this builder there. I want what was originally planned to be there. I want that stoplight there, but I want what was originally understood. And that's what I like to see done. Again, I think that was what the Villas individuals had thought and what they approved and what they supported. And I think frankly, they'll do that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, yes, sir. The planning commission, I, I heard all the arguments there also and here as well. And I know these folks extremely well. They build a great home. Their home will, it caused the value of the Villas to rise up. All the homes there will, you know, they'll be first class. And I would hate to see, if this is unapproved, I would hate to see what some other contractor could come in there and do, you know? This, these folks, you know, you got a first-class person coming in there and all support it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make one. Mr. Bishop, are you going to say anything?
Well, basically, my comment is, I agree with on both sides here because I'm looking at what was agreed to in 2014 with the proffer, and all of a sudden here we are two and a half years later, and they want to change it. So right now, I'm having a hard time going on with this change that they're asking for.
Brad?
Yeah, I left out, I left, thank you, Mr. Bishop. I left out one very important footnote in, in going back over time on this. In 2015, not only, I think the developer is first class, I should have said that to start with, and there's already been a, an expression of trust by this council for you and what you're doing out here because the application 20, 21 months ago for the apartments was prefaced by an application to change our own ordinance to allow more than 10 units per acre for R3. And there was an application to allow up to 20, and we, we permitted that, and your ultimate density is 16 and a half units per acre on that apartment. So that was an important footnote, and I think it's also, we've already demonstrated a trust in you and what you're doing out there. And not only did we approve the request, but we changed our ordinance to allow those higher densities than we did before. So I forgot to leave, I want to get that on the record too.
Very good. Michelle?
Oh, thank you. I have been sort of battling over this for the past two weeks, and I guess, Mr. Robertson, you mentioned about your financing. Is that still the issue as of today for your, I mean, if you could speak on that, that was.
Yes, sir. So as I've mentioned at the public hearing, it's, the financing we have is lined up, but we can't get the appraisal to appraise for the amount. So therefore, you know, even though we have approval for the loan, the bank and or, you know, someone that comes out and does this appraisal to look at the value of the land with the improvements on, it does not get to the value that we need to make the project go forward. And so without changing the plan, you know, it really does make this project, it stops progress on it. We cannot get the financing, and therefore we cannot move forward under the current plan.
Thank you. As I said, I, I battled over this for a while. I know personal friends who live in Mr. Robertson's statements homes, townhomes, regular homes, and I'll just echo what this entire council has said. I mean, he's a, he's a quality developer, and it's somebody we have looked for, for years to come into the community. It's something I pushed for years with pedestrian accommodation, more green space. All that is part of your, your development that you have. I do understand what the, what the residents of the Villas, and I do feel for you. But I believe, and I take Mr. Robertson as word when it comes to his financing, that this development will be good for the town of Christiansburg, and I support this. I've seen this type of development. It's, it's a bit larger than Cambria Crossing, but I'm going to support this today basically on the product that you deliver and the people I know who have testimony who live in your houses and in your communities. So we'll be supporting this. If this was any other developer, I probably would not be pushing this, but I've seen the quality that you put out. Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk. Now, the motion is to deny the request, so an a vote is to deny the request, a no vote is to vote against denial. Is that correct?
Yes. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shelalter?
No.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Very interesting. We have a time. Not often do I get to vote, and when I do, damn, it's a doozy. So, I am going, I'm going to vote no. So with that, we have four no votes, three a votes.
Yes, sir.
The motion passes.
No, that motion doesn't pass.
It doesn't pass. Okay, so that's done.
Right.
All right. So it does not, very good. Under the next here, the, the next.
There's still action.
Yeah, but we still have to.
The motion died. There needs to be another motion.
There's probably going to be another motion here.
All right. Does there need to be?
Yeah, that, that does. Still approve it.
Do I need to make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, someone does.
Just so we got everything clear, we just said it was going to go from R1 to R3, correct?
No.
No.
We just.
The motion was to deny.
That's right.
The motion to deny fails.
Motion to deny is over. It's gone. So that's all that's.
So we have another motion.
All right, so I would like to make a motion to approve the request by Stateson Homes.
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Aye is to support the request as presented. Is that correct? Your motion is to approve this project.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
No.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shelalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
No.
Chair would have been, again, voted aye. The motion is carried. It is approved. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Contingent upon the above zoning request, a conditional use permit request by Snyder Hunt LLP for a 7.93 acre portion of tax map number 435A40 located north of Quinn Stewart Boulevard North, for a planned housing development in the R3 residential family district. Public hearing was held April 25th. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second.
I don't understand. I didn't vote aye on that when you've got somebody live to review and see the other.
Thank you. You want to see it gets out here? Okay. Thank you. So we have a, a motion? Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
No.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
No.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
What was that vote?
Councilman Shelalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
No.
Chair would vote aye. What a new business. Approval construction contract for the downtown and primary street extension paving project subject to final review and approval by legal counsel. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. Town solicited bids for the downtown and primary street paving project. This will provide resurfacing of Depot Street from Lester to Roanoke Street.
Close note. Let's close that note, please.
It'll provide for paving of West Main from Radford Street to Moose. And I'll throw in there that it's going to be a little more. We're going to deep mill, put down a good solid base, and then an inch and a half top course on top of that. And of course, provides finally for paving of our downtown from Roanoke Street to just west of Franklin Street, and then Franklin Street from First Street to Conner Street.
What was the first one again, Wayne? If you don't mind, the, the first street that you said?
Depot, from, from Lester, Roanoke.
Okay.
That's, we did a paving project and stopped there when we relayed the water line. Now we're picking up there and taking it away from Road Street. Roanoke Street and West Main qualify for, for a grant.
Okay.
Paid for by grant in downtown through general fund. We, we received three competitive, very competitive bids, so we ask tonight that you approve the contract for Norwood Development in the amount of $699,469.22.
Can I get that, that contractor once more, please?
Yes, Norwood Development.
Norwood Development?
Yes.
Work, they've done work for us in the past, didn't they? Very good.
And, I, I'll make a motion at this point that we approve the construction contract for Norwood Development, subject to the legal approval by council.
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
I have one question. Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The, I'm just wondering, I always like to know the range of bids, and I think you said the low bid for them was 609, I'm sorry.
669,000.
669, what, what was the range?
The next bid was 700,938, and then 725.
That's pretty, that's pretty close. 669 to 735?
725.
725, I'm bet.
669 to 725, yes.
That's a pretty good group.
Then 10%.
That's really good.
Yes, very good.
Roanoke will be done all the way out, or how far will Roanoke go? The street.
It'll go from Roanoke.
From Roanoke Street, well, West Main, excuse me, Depot was being paved from Lester.
Okay, so not Roanoke Street.
Not, not Roanoke Street.
Okay.
We're, we're keeping with our policy with, if we want to repave, we want to make sure that the water lines are in great shape, so we don't have to dig that up in a couple years.
That is the plan.
All right.
Well, I, I will point out that we, we evaluated West Main Street and Roanoke Street, and we have thrown our effort to Roanoke Street to replace those water lines. The paving of West Main Street does not include replacement of water lines, but we feel that through the 10-year life of this asphalt, that we'll be fine there. You just can't turn down free money. And we know, we know how bad West Main Street is.
It's an excellent.
Especially there at the intersection of Depot.
Can you give us an idea, you probably already mentioned, the amount of free money on this project? Which is like grant money, I have from.
I apologize for not knowing the exact.
That's okay. It's approximation is fine.
Approximately 400, 40,000.
So 400,000 of the 669 would be literally dealt with by grant funding. So one-third out of pocket.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
It's a good deal, buddy.
We, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on that one? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shelalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Ms. Sixo, thank you very much. Next project, approval of professional services contract for the Arrowhead Sewer System Evaluation Survey and Infiltration and Inflow Study, subject to final review and approval by legal counsel. Mr. Nelson?
Sir, the engineering department issued an RFP for proposals and have received and reviewed and accepted a proposal from CHA Consulting out of Blacksburg. This contract provides for the INI study of the Arrowhead Basin. It is not a basin currently on DQ's radar screen, but we are being proactive. We know this problem is there. We're not going to wait for the phone call. We feel that this is proven to move forward, given our situation. So therefore, our request through council that you approve this contract for 98,000, contingent upon final review and approval by legal counsel.
Range of bids on that?
No bids, sir. This is a request for a proposal.
Okay.
It's likely the most qualified firm to negotiate.
Very good.
Where is this located?
It is.
Arrowhead basin itself.
Arrowhead is, will be south.
Craig Mountain.
Okay, Craig Mountain, okay.
Flint Drive, Craig Mountain area.
Got you.
Yeah.
I'll move that we approve the, the contract for professional services awarded to CHA Consulting as presented by Mr. Nelson, subject to review and final approval by legal counsel.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussions?
Mr. Nelson, this is, this is not a bid issue. This is not a grant-funded item either, correct? This is pure out of pocket, correct?
Correct.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shelalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Ms. Sixo, thank you very much. Approval of professional services contract for the Church Rigby Ellet Drainage Improvements, King Street Extension Project, subject to final review and approval by council on, by legal counsel.
Yes, sir. Thank you again. We solicited proposals and have received one from Thompson and Litten. This is part of the, this is the second phase, the end of the second phase with the Brown Church Lucas. This is, we call the Church Rigby Ellet Extension. And this is for design of the extension from Cambria Street up Ellet, adjacent to Cambria Baptist Church to King Street. Everyone's maybe been through there when it's been raining and water sheet flows across the street. We want to, we don't want to stop this project where we have. We want to pick this water up as well. And this, this will be, will get under design, and we'll have this under construction this summer. This contract's an amount of $52,220 and subject to review and approval by legal counsel.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the Church Rigby Ellet community.
In Al points west?
Yes. And, well, once again, with our legal counsel approval.
Second.
Got some motion in a second. Any comments, questions?
Those professional services contracts, Mr. Nelson, I know we, of course, we have to approve those, but is there a certain amount that, that would trigger a professional services contract as opposed to a, I mean, is there, is there a certain limit to where it has to be, or we can just award it, or?
We, we issued this RFP under our term services.
Okay.
Contract. Excuse me. I backed up on this. That was not correct. We issued this RFP under small purchase, less than 60,000.
Absolutely.
For professional service.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking me that question.
Mr. Nelson, I think this pack, this eve, I did not bring my tablet tonight. My tablet's inaccessible. Our floors are being refinished now, and I forgot to get it out yesterday.
Your house is inaccessible right now.
Actually staying in Blacksburg. Actually staying in Blacksburg tonight. But the, as I remember, this contract was actually in the last agenda packet, is that correct? It wasn't in this agenda packet, is that correct? Cause I, I actually printed out this, this evening, as I'm not seen in there. My question is very simple. For this contract here, for T and L, for this, does this include design?
Yes.
Oh, it does, okay.
Includes design.
I didn't go back and look at that. I seem to remember seeing this in the last agenda. Okay. So that is actually gonna be, lead to a project that can be advertised for construction?
Yes, it's gonna be added on to the, uh, current phase, second phase that's completed.
Okay.
We just wanna do this extension because without it, we don't feel.
Oh, I got it, okay. That's it.
That's the objective of the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nelson.
Yes, sir.
So I think we have a motion and a second. We've had questions, is that correct? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Ms. Sixo, thank you very much. Next is, uh, under new business is the reappointment of Matthew Carroll to the Fire and Rescue Commission. Mr. Carroll is here tonight. He has served two years, three years? Three years on the commission. His attendance is well over sixty-six percent, and the only meetings he's really missed were due to work. I have high recommendations from Chief Hanks and Chief Cole, asking that he be reappointed because he has been a valuable member of that commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks for waiting around, too.
Yeah, really?
Interesting. There's more information to read on here. So we, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Sixo, thank you, Matt. I'll get the letter to them, or we'll notify them, uh, pretty quick on it. Thank you. Committee reports. You guys do anything this morning?
Corey, you wanna comment on the?
I will.
Water sewer?
Yeah.
I know you're wanting to, so let's do it.
I was actually checking my date real quick to make sure the first Monday in, uh, real quickly in June, so I can carry around the date to the, um, yeah, okay. We had a very productive meeting, uh, this evening. In fact, we're gonna have another one. So productive, we're gonna have one, I guess, next Tuesday as well, um, I believe at five-thirty. But we discussed this evening, the, uh, backup, we're gonna get some information on that and bring that attention and bring the homeowner back into the fray as well, uh, to see what we can do for remediation purposes. But also, and the general purpose of tonight's meeting for water sewer was looking at, uh, recycling over to the town, and, and rates, and how that would go about, and, and I'm very pleased to report to counsel and everybody present that, uh, I'm not assuming that we're gonna have this done overnight, of course, but, um, maybe from three weeks ago till today, I feel a lot more positive in the movement than where we're going, direction-wise, and I think Randy has everything well in hand, as, as, Mr. Wingfield, I should say, I apologize, has everything well in hand as to what we're looking for next, what our steps are going to be. I do envision frequent meetings between Mr. Shawalter, myself, and Mr. Wingfield to kinda continue the process going, and hopefully there'll be more substantive information agreed to counsel, uh, in the weeks and months ahead. But this is a reality. This is something to get excited about here in the town. And, um, I think we'll be there sooner than later. Hopefully within a year or so, but maybe a little longer. But again, I think we're on a very good holding pattern right now, um, but there is still some work to be done. In regards to the water and sewer committee, Henry, that's what I was gonna mention, is there anything more that you wanted to mention on that?
Just on the recycling, uh, some people may be confused that we're actually talking about curbside recycling here in the town. It's something that's been on the town council agenda, probably one of the top agenda items for years, since I've been on council, and something mentioned by residents whenever we go door-to-door, we talk about it. But it's not to take anything away from the currently, current recycle, recycling program that the town has. They still have those drop-off points, we've added drop-off points, but this is just to take it one step further to where you can recycle, uh, at your house. Well, you do anyway at your house, but you can actually have it picked up at your house instead of transporting it, which of course will increase. And it's, and we're looking at an affordable option to that. Right now, a private company does it within town, uh, and this is gonna be way, way less than that, um, if, if we're anticipating where our costs are gonna be. So it's something you definitely wanna start looking, you'll start hearing more about it next year, um, while Randy and staff do, do a great job looking into it, so they, they give us a, a great product rollout, uh, to our citizens for that, but.
Well, the key, the key is to emphasize this is privatized. This is not gonna be something that's a, and I hate to say not a town initiative, certainly it is a town initiative, but it's done on, from outside, and, uh, so therefore, equipment, maintenance, the tubs, uh, remediation, replacement, all that, uh, you know, the vehicle, vehi- vehicular infrastructure, all of that is gonna be taken care of and built into the decontract price, which we would incur as a town. And so, um, and I think that's a great idea, and again, some of the numbers we've looked at are, uh, they're very excellent. I mean, you almost expect it to be a lot higher, and you didn't see the real numbers, and, you know, you're talking a very small amount in percentage, um, to do this. And one thing we have to mention is, this is a conversational topic that came up, what we do, Henry, three and a half years ago, we toured the wastewater, not the wastewater treatment, um, MRSWA, I believe we toured three or four years ago? About right before they implemented single-stream recycling, so you don't have to worry about putting glass and paper and plastic, you can just do it all at one, and then they single-stream recycled it at the MRSWA. But at that time, one thing that was preached to us by the administrator was longevity of that landfill, and having to, and how, what we're throwing away, a small, a large percentage, a large percentage, is recyclable, which would not otherwise be dumped in that landfill, and that would extend the life of the landfill and certainly lower the cost that we may incur as a town to take it elsewhere, cause eventually we're gonna have to put it elsewhere. And so all these things kind of flow into, into one greater initiative, which is, uh, to make recycling more of a town-centered and town-enforced effort. And I'm excited to say that, again, under Mr. Wingfield's leadership right now, with the, with the water sewer committee, I think we're gonna get there, so I'm very, very excited about that.
Very good. Any other committee reports?
Briefing on Bike Way Walkway, we met on Friday, and, uh, in the sentence, we are focused on the next, uh, major extension of a Huckleberry-esque trail, uh, from the North Franklin Street corridor over to, to Roanoke Street, and right now, that's shaping up to sort of be at our new traffic signal, or thereabouts on, uh, where Davidson Pharmacy is in, in that area, and then coming up Central Avenue, and then coming all the way down through Cambria, and following, we have ample right-of-way, or not ample, but we have enough right-of-way to fit a nice ten-foot shared-use path all the way down Cambria Street, all the way out to Roanoke Street, and that would be, uh, to use a southern term, it would be bodacious. So that's your report from Bike Way Walkway Committee. It would be bodacious.
Sir? For the Regional Commission, this is a commission that meets once a month, at the end of the month, from our April meeting, and this has, uh, what makes this commission important, those of you first timers here, is it's our neighbors. It's Blacksburg, uh, Town of Pulaski, Pulaski, Giles, Narrows, Floyd, Floyd County, we all come together once a month, and it's, it's an organization where we, we share, uh, you know, what's going on in our community, and then, of course, the Regional Commission supports us as well with, with either applying for grants or certain initiatives. But, um, one of the things that, um, that sort of stood out in, um, last month's meeting, and you always get pushback for this, is tourism. You know, of course, Montgomery County, and that, that is Blacksburg, Christiansburg, we have, um, sort of a consortium, uh, of our own tourism. Radford, of course, has their own, Boyd has their own, Giles has their own, and each, each is very successful. But one of the things that the Regional Commission is looking to push is something, it's called, uh, it's an acronym, it's DMO, it's Destination Marketing Organization, and it's something we're gonna be hearing a little bit more about. It's where, it's sort of like as this commission, we work better together, okay, for certain initiatives, all right? Instead of work, we can still work separately for tourism, okay? The Montgomery County Tourism Group can still stay together, but they're looking to get a DMO together to, so we can work as a group. And, and as we all know, tourism money has, has gone up over the years, and that's what a lot of communities are looking for, is more tourism money. You'd be surprised with the Huckleberry Trail, um, if we can extend that, what that would bring in, and some communities, that's a major player. But I just wanted to sort of introduce it to counsel that, um, that's what Kevin and his crew and the Regional Commission, um, and I think the hardest part is getting us all to agree on a regional DMO, um, that's facilitated by the Regional Commission, um, and everybody putting a little bit, it might take a little bit extra, uh, seed money to get in there to make this happen, but that's something you're gonna start to hear more and more about, it's something I'm, I bought into. Now, there are other commissioners, maybe not, but, um, I believe it's something, if we can come together, we will work more effectively as a group, uh, attracting more people to what's going on in Radford, or in Pulaski, or in Christiansburg, or in Blacksburg. We, of course, again, we will still have our tourism group here, but we will also have a, a smaller, larger committee.
Regional.
Regional, based on, uh, events and attracting people into our area.
Fantastic.
Very good.
Can I mention, I, I was just mentioning earlier wastewater, and, uh, I had a few other things they mentioned as well.
Okay.
Wanted to tell everybody, the first, um, Monday in June, on June 5th, is the Recreation Commission, come one, come all. I don't know what's on the agenda yet, we won't get that out, but it's certainly available on the website, and, um, and, uh, always come and share your thoughts at the Rec Center about, uh, programs or initiatives you think maybe we need to be looking at, or anything we can do better. I do wanna report back to counsel, you may have heard from some members of, um, the citizenry, there's a big issue on quiet time. I know it's, everybody has an item that's important to them, of course, or more than one, and this was very important to a lot of members of the town. Quiet Time was modified, uh, it used to be from eight to nine-thirty Monday through Friday, yeah, I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday. It's now eight to nine AM Monday through Friday only. That was a good, if you will, marriage of the two. I don't think anybody was very satisfied, which is usually the, a good compromise, when everybody's a little bit upset about it, but also somewhat happy about it. But I think we tried to weigh all the options, and frankly, Charlton, McCoy, and Brad, and members of the commission, uh, did a fantastic job. We talked about this for about two months, it was a big issue, and again, a very heated item for some people. And lastly, I know it's now, what, June, I mean, May the 9th, we're nine days removed from child abuse prevention, um, but I wanted to say, Ms. Wingfield, I appreciate you getting the town behind it again. I mean, you think it's, might be small means, but the banner, and it, it's not, it's not, because everybody that comes to the town sees it, and they know we're a community that is, um, I think Henry mentioned regionalism, we're a community also coming together to help combat child abuse and child abuse prevention, and it works, and it, it just, it makes people and reminds them, but I appreciate what you've done this past month, and I appreciate you being present, um, at the Child Abuse Prevention Seminar. Mayor, uh, Earlene, Ms. Stipes, I really appreciate you being there. Mr. Bishop, Mr. Hubbard, I know, uh, I know the rest of you had meetings and things that were going on, I know you would've been there if you could've been, but, um, it's never, it's, it's, I go to other localities that put these things on, and you don't get anybody from their board, or from their, from their council, you just don't see them, and, and it's kinda, you, you notice they're not there, and, and here in Christiansburg, that's not the case, and we are behind this, and we're behind that initiative, and we had a gem of a speaker. Mo Green's at home, uh, Mo McClanahan, that's just, again, a gem of a member of the police department, and our Christiansburg Police Department always does a bang-up job. We are known in this region for combating child abuse, and I say that all the time, but we do, ICAC, and crimes against children, we lead the effort, and, uh, Mo enlightened us even further as to how ignorant we are about what's going on, and I, I'll highlight it by saying this, she had a picture for a piece of paper that size at the very end, and it had little, one-inch thumbnails full of, and it was really neat, I thought, what's this? I went up there, one of the judges, I said, look at this, and we started talking about it, and it was all the ways in which kids can be frankly solicited online, and I mean, this thing was full, I bet you I couldn't tell what three of the forty or fifty on there were, and I, I could only mention that, and I had no idea, and these are the ways in which frankly predators who have, um, standards beneath our own are trying to solicit from our children, uh, inappropriate, or being an inappropriate influence, but it just shows you how far we have to go to, to get in, to get the education up, but it starts, just like what we're doing every, every year, and we are starting to really lead that fight like our police department is regionally. And, uh, so again, I really appreciate everybody's efforts on that, it, it means the world to the kids, and, and it just means the world to everybody, I, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committees? Very good, on the staff reports, uh, Mr. Wingfield?
Just to remind everybody, the farmer's market's now open, it's, uh, rained this past Thursday, but we still had a fairly decent turnout despite the rain. Also, Sheriff Gordon has extended an invitation to anyone who would like to attend the following officer ceremony, it's the thirteenth annual ceremony, it'll be Monday, May 22nd at five, and that'll be at the sheriff's office. Also, I'd like to set a public hearing for the water and sewer rates and budget, uh, of course, we're starting to deal a little bit tight on time on that. We couldn't schedule it for the next regular meeting because we basically have a two-week window for advertisement, and it would have to basically be in the paper tomorrow, which we couldn't do. We could have a special work session on the thordia just for the public hearing, if you would choose to do it on a Thursday, but also do it June 6th. If you push it to the June 13th regular council meeting, that would only basically leave the next council meeting, the regular council meeting for the vote.
Did you say May 30th, we, we could do it on a special session?
Tuesday?
That's a Tuesday.
You, you could, yes, if you wanna do it on a Tuesday.
Uh, what's the Thursday date?
That's the, uh, that's the first, Mr. Collins.
The, the, the Thursday would be first?
Yeah, first of June. I tell you.
Let's go with the first thing we can, first chance we have.
I, I believe, I'll just speak for myself, I'm open that Tuesday, I'm open that Thursday in the evening, uh, frankly, I'd rather do it on the 30th. I know we're already here every single Tuesday anyway, maybe.
I think we're gonna be here every Tuesday until the first of July, to be quite honest with you, but that's all right.
But two days might prove important.
I think, I think we don't paint ourselves in the corner, cause I have, I have a gut feeling this year's budget's gonna take some wrangling, and we're gonna need to agree.
So do I hear May 30th?
Yes.
Did good?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay.
And that'll be advertised rates and budget all in one?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, Mr. Wingfield?
We would need, we would need an idea of the rates to advertise for the water sewer increases. You can advertise them at a rate higher than you adopt.
But not lower.
But not lower.
You need two weeks?
Yes, we need two weeks' notice on that.
And we could not do that then on the 16th?
Then no, you cannot do that on the 16th.
And I, I'll propose, after this evening's discussion, we better feel comfortable about what we're gonna advertise.
Yeah, I agree.
Because that's what people are gonna remember.
Yep.
The next.
And I don't wanna advertise high.
The next foot that's gonna fall is gonna be what we put in the paper.
Let, let me ask you one question then, everybody. Let me ask you one question then, everybody. We just now set the May 30th, I put 2013, that's real good, 2017, at 6:00 PM for the advertising, that's our public hearing for our rates and our budget. May I suggest that maybe, I know I don't mean to take two days away, but if we do it on the 1st, that allows us to convene on the 16th, and to, and to give Mr. Wingfield our firm determination of those rates, and that way, he can advertise starting the next day, which puts us right, because it's 15 days away on an advertising basis from the 1st. Whereas if not, we're gonna have to have an additional meeting from now until the 16th to figure out those rates.
Correct.
And I can do either way, but I think if we know the 1st is open right now, it's much easier to set a schedule today for the 1st, than it is to wait a week or two and schedule it. But if we can do that, and set our public hearing on the 1st of June, we can still come back together on the 16th of next week, which we're supposed to do anyway, and maybe the first 30 minutes can dedicate to the, letting, giving your firm understanding to Mr. Tweedy and to Mr. Wingfield about the rates, and that way, they can move forward on what they need to do. It also gives us time since we got the budget to not have draft, 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 to look that over as well. I, I would frankly, I would suggest that, to give us the 14 days.
Would the two of you feel more comfortable with that?
Earlier the better is where I'm at, so the earlier we can meet to decide what the, what we want to advertise, the better. So whoever that works on the calendar.
We'd have to advertise the work session, right? If we do a work session.
Yeah, it has to be advertised, the, we have to advertise work session, not the seven days, but the fee increase has to be advertised two weeks prior.
Well, no, what I mean is, right now, I mean, today being the 9th, and we're gonna be back on the 16th, we've already advertised for the 16th, we could still modify our advertising for the 16th to include a discussion on rates.
Yes.
But we couldn't do one on Thursday this week, wouldn't have adequate notice.
Right.
Correct.
So we're forced to pretty much do it on the 16th.
Actually, three, three-day notice for council meeting.
Will the 16th work with the time for two weeks for the public hearing?
For the 1st, if we got it in the paper, literally the next day.
The next day. We'd have, we'd have to come prepared to let you know that, when we, we can't wrangle, frankly, maybe that's what we need.
Have it in the paper the next day.
So the earliest, if we wait till the 16th, the earliest that we can advertise it is for June 1? Is that my understanding correct?
Correct. And that's literally if we made sure we let you know that, that day, so we need to do that. That's our job.
We can shoot to get some stuff out to ahead of that meeting.
Yeah, y'all've done a great job this far, Ms. Tweedy, I know we're still wrangling over those rates, but, and there's a lot to wrangle over, this is a big issue, and y'all've done a very good job in educating us, and we just keep on having more and more questions, I know. But, we're gonna get there.
Oh, wouldn't you think, that you don't have that new information, I'm not trying to rush you, I'm just.
Do you see Wednesday, maybe by Thursday?
Thursday, okay.
So we can chew on that.
All right, so we've changed it to June 1st at 6 o'clock for work session, right?
No, that's the public hearing.
The public hearing.
But that is a, yeah, that's, that's a call council meeting. To, all right, June 1, 6 o'clock, 5:30, 4:30, 6 o'clock, good?
And we need, we need now modify our work session on the 16th, it's for the, is for the, the athletic fields and the park, correct?
Yes.
And so we need to now modify that, and to add a discussion on the, on the rates.
If you would like to, yes.
I think we probably, I think we should.
Okay.
We really, we really should.
Yeah, we have to.
We just have to be there then.
And right now, we're coming together at 6:00 next Tuesday?
Yes.
So maybe we'll.
We don't have anything pushing behind us on that Tuesday, so we can continue on into that, into that.
Yeah, after the meeting, yeah.
After that meeting, or we can include the work session to list both, if I'm not mistaken?
We can, we can.
So, I mean, we don't have a time constraint like we had tonight?
Only thing I don't want to do is, I mean, Ms. Tweedy won't be a part of the, probably the parks conversations and all that stuff, but I'd hate for her to sit around till 8:00 or so, 8:30.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I'm sorry?
I can sit down.
Okay.
She's got enough to do right now with the budget, yeah.
But either way, if we can advertise that.
We can adjust it to the discussion on the rates first, and then that will allow Ms. Tweedy to.
Work on notice for the next day.
Work on notice, and Melissa to work on that. Okay.
Let me ask one question, the thing for the, Montgomery, the, with Chief Pardon, was that a 5:00 time on the 22nd?
22. 5:00 PM.
5:00 on the 22nd.
Yeah. That's a beautiful one, well, that's, it's really classy.
So what you got? All right. Anything else? So, county attorney?
Just about, I didn't know that y'all were having the noise ordinance discussion tonight, so I was reading the noise ordinance.
Well, I have a copy here, I can give you, that's fine.
No problem.
That's fine. Wayne, other staff, engineering?
Good evening again, I want to give you an update on the Cambria Street, North Franklin Street intersection and corridor project. First like to point out that certainly the focal point of this project is this intersection here.
Purposely skipped that today on the way to.
This is a proposal, early proposal, but not what we're gonna present.
The green is the proposal, correct? That's early proposal.
Correct. The project includes access management along North Franklin from the intersection here with Cambria, down to Independence, and it'll involve installation of a traffic signal at, at the future connection.
And just so people know, that's the Trinity Baptist Church right up there, correct? Just so everybody's in the audience, right?
That's their new entrance, we'll have to rework their entrance. We're proposing to dedicate right-of-way along the front of the Food Line Shopping Center, and this will be a public street connecting up to the Recreation Center, and we'll be closing entrances along North Franklin. We, at this point, the consultant, McCormick Taylor, has performed the field survey, that's complete. Their traffic engineer has conducted their traffic study, got their traffic counts, and has, they have looked at different alternatives, and I'd like to share those with you tonight. This first is a, this is the year 2040, thank you, no build solution. You can see that in the, whoops, in the AM, excuse me, in the AM, the morning, the intersection is at E level, that's a level of service, A through F, F is what we're all used to, in F, we don't want a F. B here is at the off-ramp from 460 business. And then in the evening hours, the intersection fails. This is the no build option. So I wanted them to di away, what, with today's conditions, what would it look like in the year 2040? And we'll move to alternative number one. This is where, gosh, this is where the 460 business and the 460 bypass off-ramp converge from two, four lanes, two lanes each, into, into two. As you can see in the morning, it's at level of service D, in the evening, D, but up here, at this area here, it's, it's an F. This is alternative two. This is where the 460 bypass, 460 business, traffic is redirected to a single signal located here north of the railroad tracks. The current 460 business route would be eliminated. We would maintain the off-ramp connection to Cambria Street, that is to aid traffic wanting to go, go east on Cambria. And this provides for three lanes crossing the railroad tracks. As you can see, the level of service is D in the evening hours, but this will require widening the crossing at the railroad tracks here, widening that crossing. We'll move to 2B, where it's the same configuration with one signal controlling both 460 business and the 460 bypass ring traffic, except that there are two lanes that cross the tracks instead of three. But as you see, the level of service has not decreased, still at a D. And then last but not least, I asked them to look at a roundabout, we've heard that. North Franklin Street has about 26,000 vehicles per day.
Mr. Nelson, just as a point of comparison, I first, the first thing I think about is intersection on prices for, and over there close to where the BW3s is in Blacksburg, I said one's in my mind for some reason, I'm putting you on the spot, any ideas about how many cars go through there a day? Because that was the same size roundabout as this would be, correct?
It's about 17,000 on that.
Is it 17?
Yeah.
He's the engineer, that's his job.
So 17,000, and we're projecting 26,000 on this?
26.
And that is the same size, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
I think roundabouts are a good idea. I don't think this is a location we need to cut our teeth on.
I think you're right.
I mean, what I've heard too is, the roundabout would have to be large, and I'm not sure if that, that terrain right there will take a, a roundabout that large.
Well, just, just by the numbers alone, it fails, and we never felt that it would be a viable option, but we know a certain segment of the community interested in that, and so we'd like to address it, and we will address it at the design public hearing.
When is that gonna be?
We're projecting now it will be as early as June.
Like next month, June?
No, I'm sorry.
June, next year?
Yes.
I didn't anticipate that actually.
I'm sorry. I'd like to show you the alternative cost. You see, the, we're focused in here on, on alternative two and 2B, three lanes versus two lanes. You see the difference in the cost, roughly 700,000, and that certainly is primarily due to dealing with the railroad, widening that crossing. We have talked about putting in enough pavement for three lanes, but not adjusting the crossing at this time. That would be prudent if, if it felt that was needed.
Hey Wayne?
Yes, sir.
That track, how often is that track used?
Not often as they'd like you to believe, but monthly, every couple of months.
I've never seen a train there ever.
It's not.
Never.
Certainly around lunchtime when they go.
Well, here's one thing, is it the support recording at that base?
It does, it does, yes, it does. Lastly, they did a, they rated, they, they scored the alternatives, and as you can see, alternative two and 2B were very close, very close, but two ranked, 2B ranked first.
What was that score out of, Wayne? Score out of 110? So the highest rank was a 58?
It's an engineer's score, probably doesn't mean a whole lot.
Okay.
Some objective.
Comparative. It does to the engineer.
Probably doesn't round up to something even.
50 is, 30, 80, that's a hundred.
It does, okay.
Again, we project the design public hearing for June of 2018. We are in a situation where we need to make a decision and get the engineers moving forward because of, because of the schedule. We certainly are leaning towards the two, 2B alternatives. We, if anyone has any thoughts at this point, but.
Yeah, how come we can't get an A rating? A or B?
Because we'd have to go to overpass and off-ramps, and I don't think.
You'd have to call a great separated interchange like they're putting in the South Gate right now, you have to separate that traffic that was turned down at the other, other end of Blacksburg.
Wayne, 2B has the endorsement at this point, yourself and the town, this is what, working with the consultants, this is what they've come up with as the best option. I hate to say least worst, but, I mean, but I'm, I'm just looking at those scores, I'm not an engineer of course, but that 2B is where they're gonna focus, that seems to be the focal point at this point.
Yes.
And just so everybody is aware on camera and here in the audience, the, this is a big project, it's gonna be beautiful when it's done, I can't wait to see it done, but what percentage of this is grant-funded? I know what I've just.
98%.
I was gonna say, how much is that again, Ms. Tweedy?
About 98%.
98% of this is free money, correct?
Well, let's go for overpass.
We have some work in progress to put on it, but.
Right. Well, this is because you are up for this grant.
We pay the 2% of the 600,000.
This, this was lightning strike because HB2 funded this, and Mr. Showalter brought up a very good point. This connector road between North Franklin and 114 is absolutely critical for our long-term traffic network. There's gonna be a big improvement, but I expect, I'd expect, off the top of my head, you probably have about 30, 30% traffic relief on that intersection by traffic that's going simply between Route 114 and North Franklin Street. So during this discussion, just to say, this council, we need to stay focused, we've already done a great job as a group of making that a priority and getting it in front of people for funding, and lightning struck on this project, and if we stay on this, then we'll get that other road built, but that, Mr. Showalter was right, that other project is part of the long-term solution that'll last for generations.
Mr. Stipes, you make a great point, did the engineers factor in the lessening of the impact upon that corridor once the post-construction of that road from 114 to Franklin?
The, the Raimy Kemp, a different consultant that was a sub-consultant of Dan Neal, that studied the North Christiansburg Regional Park and those traffic, traffic concerns, that was taken into account. They studied that connector road all the way to, to North Franklin Street.
When they did their traffic counts and traffic study up there where the Recreation Department is, and came up with the 26,000 vehicles per day, were they, do they, was that, that's the actual number they, they had counted for their study?
That's a number published by VDOT for, for North Franklin Street. The actual.
That probably doesn't take into account any of the connector from 114 to Franklin?
Correct. They, they just, that's a VDOT number, when they did their traffic count, they were out there for a couple of days at that intersection.
I want to say that because the, the roundabout issue, if, if you, there is, I don't know what the percentage could possibly be, again, this is really Brad's thing, but if the, if the impact or the load on that corridor is reduced by say 25 or 30%, does it possibly put us into the opportunity for perhaps a roundabout, or does it, if it lessens about, I mean, if we get to 20,000 or something like that, or? I don't know, I just, I just don't know that's a factor.
I don't know what, I'm not sure what that point would be.
Okay.
I know whatever we, I know whatever we do, the people of this town will bless us.
Oh, I'd say it's.
You know, I mean, this is something that everybody knows we need to fix, and it's gonna be tough when we're fixing that, it's gonna be mad. But in the long run, people are, everybody knows this is a super problem.
And your question is very valid, you know the old saying, burden hands worth two in the bush.
Indeed.
Our first, first round of scoring for the connector road, we did, we did very well in one, one phase of it. Second round of scoring, we didn't do so well. So we go back to, to not this fall, the fall and fall, with our application, we'll be, we sharpen our pencils and bearin' down on this project.
Well, the focal's always that traffic up there and coming off the bypass and waiting in line, and I do it as well. But the reality is, from, even from that traffic center to the high school, the safety that you'll enhance because of the, getting rid of those end points, end, end points, is, is worth its weight in gold. There's a lot of, I mean, that's, that's, you know, 45 miles an hour through there, and people are jetting left and right, and it's, we've already tried to do it with the, no, taking a left turn out of the McDonald's anymore, and that was to help to guide traffic in a safe pattern without that, that blind overlook. But this is really a, this is a safety enhancement, I'm sure we're through it, in my opinion.
And I will point out, there are no crosswalk accommodations at this intersection.
None. And we've had, we've experienced at the town in that area, walking across the road.
So we'll be in discussion of Recreation Center and their activities, and that's, that's higher in our, higher in priorities.
What, with adding a crosswalk? Or not?
No crosswalk.
No crosswalk.
It, it just lengthens the cycle and causes more traffic backup. It lowers the, the rating of the intersection.
We're looking maybe down at the new segment.
Maybe that's what the Huckleberry can relieve, if you can get the extension.
Actually, where the connector route, you tie in on North Franklin's where we're thinking we'd have the pedestrian crossing.
Yeah. Down here, that'll get you access to Central Avenue.
Gotcha, thank you.
With your blessing, we're gonna, I guess, further pursue the 2B option in more detail, of course, we will still have public hearings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good, council reports, Mr. Hubbard?
Well, I wanted to just say that on May 20th, it's a Saturday, the Montgomery Museum is gonna have their cruising cars in downtown, and it's gonna go from 4:00 to 7:00. And then I wanted to just comment on what everybody else is sort of like, talking about recycling, and I, I remember hearing in Monroe County or somewhere where they started recycling, curbside recycling, and the amount of recycling material, something like tripled, it was a huge amount, just to show you what the effect it would have, and of course, it lowers our garbage, and it proves cleanliness, and as we've bought out too, you know, reduces the landfill. So it's, it's, it's a tremendous thing, and if we can pull this off, I think it'd be great, and I think the people would really appreciate it. great, and I think the people would really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Showalter?
Just real quick, this past Saturday, I met with, I actually took part on a Saturday to meet with a few citizens who actually ride our buses. And this was set up through the Virginia Organizing, which enables certain citizens who are the demographic that typically ride our, ride our buses or need our services. Andre Nash, he did a great job, and they had great input, and surprisingly, some of the things they talked about are the more traditional routes that would benefit them, not necessarily the Go Anywhere. Yeah, they did talk about the bike way, walkway, about pedestrian, safe pedestrian crossways, but mainly we talked about the, the transit system. And it's something I'm going to bring to the, we're, we're committee this Thursday, right? Around 1:00? Is that when it is? But I just want to let you know, I mean, I ride the commuter bus, I know Brad has on occasion. I have never ridden the, any of our traditional transit lines or the Go Anywhere. So it's refreshing to hear from the people actually use it and to know that people are using it, and sort of get a fresh take out of it. I know what we're usually presented with is Go Anywhere is successful, well, it is, because it's a taxi service that costs 50 cents. But the people I've talked to, I mean, we just, and I'll give you a little brief what I'm going to introduce, we're not reaching the people that use this bus, who take it to work, who are dependent on it to go to work, who are dependent on it to get home. I know BT's going out, meeting with some of our high-density areas like Nugget Ridge, Linden Green, or I believe that's one of them. But, you know, we have, if we're properly going to do this service, we have to meet their needs. I don't think the Go Anywhere is necessarily there, I know that's what BT pushes, so it's something that's going to be a hard decision for this council. Are we going to continue funding a BT service? But if we're going to do it, we have to meet their needs. And if we're not meeting their needs, and a traditional route is the way to go, that's what we need to explore, that's what we need to push through, and that's what we need to back, not reducing those traditional routes, okay? We're all familiar with, we're creatures of habit. So if you know the bus is going to come at this particular time, you're going, you're going to make sure you're on it so you can get to work, and hopefully, we'll extend the hours to where they can get home as well, instead of having to bend. Because the minute you can only take it one way, it sort of becomes undependable transportation for the people that need it. So a little insight on, it was a great discussion, it was a terrific discussion, and I'll share more with you once we meet with the working group on Thursday, but appreciate it, Mike.
I would like that, and so you take that one, I've got it. And that's, I've got a regional solidly started meeting, my last one for Barry to take second. Mr. Stein?
One brief comment. The next council meeting's on the 23rd, and my family's taking a vacation, and our plane gets back around 1:00 in Greensboro on Tuesday, the 23rd, so we should be back, 95% chance it should be back, just to, but y'all noticed that there is a small chance we might not make it. Second thing is, we've got a, we've got a, we've got a crucible with our budget this year, and I want to bring your attention to a note that you got here this evening, and just real briefly, Ms. Oling, or I've known her most of my, in fact, I would say all my cognizant life. I grew up in Blacksburg on Given Lane, and she lived in the trailer courts across the street, and I delivered her newspaper when I was a kid. I've known her my whole life, and she is a, she is a fantastic person. She bought her first house in Christiansburg at age 66. Her dream was to own a home when she came to Christiansburg. Just read a few excerpts, just leave this on your mind when we're deliberating about our utilities and about the cost of responsibility here in town. "I thought I had found a dream. After 66 years, I got a home in Christiansburg," and this is just a few years ago. She mentioned the $6 rate last year on the stormwater, which, you know, there's a story behind that, we do what we have to do, but just be cognizant. And then on the back, on this issue, talking about the utility rates that were, from our first work session on this, on this issue, someone was asleep at the wheel. In this issue, it's about $16.15 more per month, as I figure on my bill, based on the paper rates. The math is, I'm at over $60 increases a month. That's huge for an income on Social Security and VRS. After tax, well under $30,000 a year. Choices get really tight on that, on that income. Running for office isn't a solution for me, but if nothing changes, I will have to go back to a job at age 71 and not in good health. The dream is a nightmare, literally, but this is a, this is a woman with a fantastic heart and respectful, she actually ran for council in Blacksburg. But just a real, a reality of what we're dealing with here, and $16 is a lot of money to some people. Okay. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I read her letter, and of course, she also complained about an 18.1 tax increase in her tax assessment that we don't control.
Don't take away from my comments.
I understand that. She says about $60 a month. Never mind.
Look, first off, you all should have stopped me, because I'm still getting used to the, to the new agenda, and I gave my report under the committee reports, even my appreciation for Mr. Winfield and the town for the child abuse prevention. But I don't have anything further to add except for this. Henry, thank you for bringing up those comments. My concern, just to throw it out there, for the Go Anywhere, you're exactly right, it's a 50 cent taxi service, yet it's the largest single rider taxi service, literally, vehicle I've ever seen, because it, well, it seats about 25. And when you use that for Go Anywhere, it's 50 cent rate, and that whole bus that seats 25 is going to one place to pick up one person, to make one stop.
Can I make a point? The people I met with typically cannot get a reservation, you have to call daily.
Three days in advance is what I've seen at times. We've tried it with the young, people that we've...
I'll be honest with you, if, if I was dependent on the Go Anywhere, I would probably walk in.
Well, and that's why, the reason I said it, is you're exactly right, we need to meet the populations that are utilizing it, and I think that, hopefully in the near future, we can have a meeting, a good discourse with BT. And I think it's good to have a nice, regular route, but it, you know, not where it only comes to one spot every two hours, I mean, it's got to be a recurrent to where people can, if they can catch it here, and at least get dropped off somewhere close to work, I mean, whatever the case may be, but a nice route that really hits those population centers and the commercial centers, I think is important. So again, I just want to applaud your efforts and that on behalf of all of us for talking to them, and hopefully we can, again, move that forward as we, as we move forward with the BT. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir, I got a few things. Oh, with the Blacksburg Transit, if you need any help on that, let me know, because you know how I feel.
We went on the ride, did we take a ride?
Yeah, we did, we took a ride, yeah.
Sam, you went?
I did not. I didn't go.
You didn't go on the, on the tour ride around town?
You and I, and I think that's all.
Harry and Andrew and...
Yeah, yeah, Andrew was there, yeah.
All right, very good, all right.
I want to talk about some work that, I'll put yourself in the car, and you're leaving the, and you're leaving the, the Cracker Barrel Restaurant ahead and towards town, and you look on the right-hand side, up the hill, at the interstate bridge, just before the bridge there, somebody's poured the concrete. It's supposed to be a drain, you know, you know, for water off the interstate, but it looks like it's been poured by six-year-old people. I'm sure you've seen it, Alex, you know, right? Now, I don't know if this was done by the town, VDOT, it's terrible, really, it's terrible. It looks awful, needs to be looked at, and of course, there's nobody here from the public works, if you could ask them.
If it's from the interstate, it's probably VDOT.
VDOT, well, the VDOT needs to get their, hand parts back and repair it, fix it, it looks awful, looks awful. And the other thing is, last night, I attended the ACE program as well as, how can you talk to them, as well, as the mayor, and it was a great program, there was a lot of people there. The ACE program, for y'all that don't know, is a program where the communities are going to pay for students to go to the New River Community College for free if they meet certain criteria. And it was a big deal last night, and I felt like I was really rich, and of course, I wasn't, so anyway, it was a nice, it was here at the Lane Stadium.
The President's Square.
The President's Square, yeah, it was nice, it was nice. That's all.
It was a good turnout, and, and we had, we had a reasonable turnout, at least five, five of them here were there. And it was, and it is a good program, and the more that you hear about it, the more excited that you get, and the more excited you get for the, some of the, some of the youth that are just had it in their mind, they'll never be able to go to college, and this certainly gives, gives them a way to go. Had an interesting call this week, and we, some point in time, we, and it may be Brad's group with the Bike Way Walkway, had a call from a lady in Roanoke yesterday who had hosted a family, not a family, a man and a woman from Germany who's riding the 76 Trail, the bike trail, and they were looking for a place to stay in Christiansburg and camp. They don't have it at this point. Now, I do know that the fire department will refer them back to, a lot of people will go to the fire department, the police, they will refer them to the area behind the fire department, either a plateau or even over into the downtown park.
Aquatics has also allowed them there by the skateboard too, in the past.
Yeah, I think we need to come up with something, and one, find out if there is a liability, you know, if, if we're going to do this, one, do we need to charge a minimal fee and sign a waiver? Otherwise, it could very well go into a homeless shelter. I mean, it could turn into a camp zone for people not using the bike, bike, so it's something to think about, Brad, maybe, is this something y'all would look at?
Yeah. I think it's a neat, yeah, I think it would be neat to have a place to be able to turn it.
We looked at, we looked at...
A short-term, yeah.
One, one day, two day, whatever. And I ran into some people last year at the farmer's market that were doing exactly that, and they came to the farmer's market, fresh fruit, and best, cannot remember for a lifetime whether they were staying, but there, there's some areas out there that, you know, the fire department, as long as we know, get a, get a designated spot and determine if we have any liability if we don't get something signed, so we'll work on that. And the other part of the thing is, I've, you know, spent, spent the better part of the day on a couple of things, one being the starlight, and, and I want to reiterate, I don't think that there is anybody in town on this board that wants to see them closed down. But what we do want to see is them adhere to the, to the noise ordinance that's in effect. It's plain and simple. Mark Sisson has worked, in a jiffy day, said, get a mediator, well, Mark Sisson has met with Peggy 40 times at least to talk about this thing, and they've tried options, and they've tried options. I don't know what the, what the solution would be, I certainly don't think that we as a town need to be putting money into screens and landscaping that will benefit her. I mean, I just, I'm not sure that's the route we want to take, but if council feels we need to go that way, we should. But the fact of the matter is, you know, noise ordinance is in effect, and noise ordinance could be construed to say, no loud and discernible noises from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And it's, matter of fact, it is there now. It is our, how well it's enforced, I don't know. So there seems to be some agreement or disagreement as to whether they qualify under one of those exemptions. I think you lost that route when you took on the new, the new sound system. Anyway.
Mayor, I'm going to tell you, I'm thinking here at my advanced age, I might build the drive-in this weekend, just to get a feel for it.
I'm sure that I will go, tell you, I'm certainly not going to give advanced notice as to when I'm going, nor will our other people.
Calm down.
Say what?
Not, not that, I was just thinking about the movie that's playing. You love it, Steve.
All right. Is there anything else to come before council? Thank you.